Thanks for being here. This is a continuation of a meeting from last week, so we will begin with early public comment and then go to our--
Excuse me, Mayor, I'd like to make a comment, please.
Sure.
Since this is called now a special meeting, I'd like to table items on the agenda, and the tabling I would like to do is table everything besides 7B, 8A--
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Under pending business--
Under pending business--
You want to table--
Table everything besides 7A.
No, besides--
Do best practices. 7B, I have time.
Okay.
Under 8A would be A and C. Those will be only three items because this is called a special meeting. Everything else can wait till the bottom room or our room.
If I may, this is a special meeting because it is a continuation of our last work session. The agenda stays the same. Again, I have no problem with you tabling a few of the items, just I just want to address some other ones you have that I think are timely. We have-- well, Councilwoman Shorben, you put report on operating and financials for animal shelter.
Right.
So you have no problem with that item being tabled?
No.
Okay, because there is later on in the agenda something we really have to deal with. We have two part-time employees leave the borough for full-time opportunities, and we will need to appoint two part-time people to replace them because our ACO and our staff is just overworked. So I didn't know if those two related. You put the financial request on the agenda, but further down, we need to item H is to hire two part-timers, two places, which is what we need, and I don't think it's right to wait till the 1/35.
I--
Right, and we have a matter-- Is that active? Yes, okay. Item J, 8J, we had an employee suffer a severe injury, non-work-related, but we need to approve his authorization for medical disability. But I wasn't there yet, so we have a lot of problems here when-- If we could--
See, I think one of the problems is, is that we don't really get enough information before the meeting. I thought that the animal shelter employees were additional employees. I didn't know they were replacing people, so it would have been helpful to-- if, I don't know if anyone else knew that, if other people had known, we're just replacing employees. I feel differently about it if we're just going to replace them at the same hours and at the same rate.
That's exactly what it is, and again, no disrespect, there was an email sent to all of us that we had the two people resigned, and this is why this was on the agenda. That email was weeks ago. So we can just go, okay. Again, you want to table--
Okay, so we're going to leave on the hiring? I don't know how--
Let's see, if we can start under pending business, you want to definitely table A. Let's circle what we're going to table. Table A. All right, Councilwoman Petush?
That's correct.
B remains. C, again, Councilwoman, you can table that, but I need you to take action on the new business item.
Mayor, for the record, I have the information when she's requesting that she does that.
I want to leave that on. Leave it on.
Okay, I don't mind if it waits till next, till Tuesday.
Well, if we're going to do the other moment, might as well here.
This is a work-- This is really our work session. Okay. Discussion in regard to Night May on Bailey Ave., that's been tabled since September 18th. I know Councilman Menyasti is looking to move forward, and I thought he had some commitments from the governing body to do so.
Okay, well, wait a minute on that. I have gotten, tried to get in touch with Ray twice, because I keep reading in the paper, and I keep hearing a week ago that it was too late. So my comment to him, which he said he didn't understand, was, "If it's truly too late, remove it from the agenda." But I never heard back, "Is it too late or isn't it?" Do you have an answer?
Yes, Councilman Conklin contacted me and said he was interested in putting it back on.
But that's not the question.
And your comment on the patch was that the only question you had was insurance laws, otherwise you go forward now.
Right, and just a minute-- Just an hour ago, I got the answer to my question on the insurance. But that's not my question.
About an hour and a half ago, I saw your note, and your question--
That's not my question. Answer my question.
What is your question?
Is it too late to do it from the organizers? Because that's all I've read in the paper, that's all I heard at the meeting a week ago. It's too late.
It's not too late.
If it's not too late, you've answered my question.
Okay, so that will remain. If you want authorized bill from the Borough Auditor. We see the bill--
We're going to table--
Not authorized, okay.
I think both the B and F should be on a closed session.
Yes. I don't know, Fred, you're more familiar than Mike, those closed-session items?
We've all had, we can certainly discuss it at the next closed session, and then there would be public action.
Okay, so E--
You resolved that?
Yes. Well, we never discussed about it--
That's right. Can we discuss--
Executive session.
Executive. Not tonight, because--
No, no.
Yeah, it would have to be next week.
So E and F, Jane, will move to our next meeting's executive session. So, B, C, and D. Status, request for proposals, that can, we can carry that until the 23rd. I don't think Ted has any update on that either. Proposals for planners for redevelopment, I've been doing nothing. H, status, again, these are work session items, so we're going to now turn our regular meetings, for the record, Councilwomen, I know you have no issue with that--
Right.
--work session items to a regular meeting. So we're going to, in length of time of meetings, I know about you, but these are now going to become very lengthy discussions at our next meeting as opposed to tonight's work session. So item H, establish, again, new status, a new website, which should be online very shortly, but the email archiving, bill-paying options, you want to table that one?
Yes, I do.
Okay, discussion regards to 182 Union Ave.,--
I'll put that on the agenda, and I'm willing to wait till--
Okay. Status of installation on lights for Walter T. Burton School, cost of engineering?
Next week.
K, you put on the agenda, discussion in regards to Main Street property--
That's the next week.
Item L, I think we need to-- Like--
We can introduce next week.
This, I'll just give her, this can be removed, because what we're going to do is introduce an ordinance next week. Jane has a few permits that she has to reply to that are quite overdue on permits for clothing bins. We have an ordinance that does not allow clothing bins on private property. I want to amend the ordinance that will allow clothing bins on private property, because it's benefiting the DARE program and the police department, because we have a few that are. So we've got to bring them into compliance. So by doing so, we would introduce next week the ordinance that exists and amended to state just that. So that will, so that will be strictly from--
So you're going to restrict this right now?
Because we're going to introduce an ordinance. Discussion in regards to ordinance for delivery of mulch and topsoil. Councilman Menyasti put that on there, I know you have back some figures.
I thought I did.
You put that on, correct.
I put it on the two, two meetings ago.
So you want to talk about that tonight, or--
We can talk about it if you don't want--
It's a pleasure, the Council.
I'd like to remove it till the next meeting.
This one, item N, status in regards to payment of former CFO Donna Olino. I'd ask we take action. This woman has been waiting since May for payment from the borough, and has the figures that the governing body asked for from the last meeting. We were all capping on an email, and we can't be over the money for the time she served.
I haven't seen the bills. I thought I went through all my emails. We actually have the details of the dates and the amounts.
I have bill, email, and the actions which you table.
Okay. I did not get it, and I'm going to have to check, because I didn't--
I would like to keep that up in the chat, please.
Are we tabling now?
No, that's the statement. And then item O, status of CFO and QPA, we can move that, because I know there's no status there. We attribute one person to intentional surgery. Update on shared service with Riverdale and Kinnellon, that we can hold. Eight. Item A, I'd like to keep on there, take actions authorized, except the 70,000.
We are, okay.
Item B can be held, that's just discussion for, we received notice of an 8% rate increase on our health insurance for 2013. Item C needs to be done this evening--
Right.
--which is our municipal lines grant, which the deadline was today. We submitted a letter to the county asking for an extension, so we hope we'll be successful. Item D, this one we need to discuss tonight, because we have, it's a time issue. We have $40,000 remaining in a very old grant from State County of Walter T. Burton. We must spend down this money, Ted can confirm this, by December 31st this year, we'll lose it. And I want to discuss the three projects that our organization have Ted seeked for to spend down this money. It'll take just a moment. It's a work session item. Introducing a bond ordinance for emergency replacement of warding man on Lakeside. Here again, we had a massive, two massive rates on Lakeside. There are literally a Band-Aid on these pipes since it occurred, which was a couple weeks ago. We need to introduce an ordinance this evening. We need four votes to do that. Then we need 10 days, so we can't even adopt on the 23rd. We'd have to adopt on November 27th, our next meeting. So this, we need to introduce this ordinance by type to get this funding in place for this emergency rate. Okay? Item F needs to be done, request for flea market waiver permit fee for the Bloomingdale Avenue Auxiliary. Item G, I referenced earlier, we need to authorize these replacement people. It's no more hours, Councilwoman, it's no more money, it's just replacing the two people who resigned. And our current ACO staff is overworked as a result of the shortage. Okay? Item I, this has been here since last week. This is on the water tank, tank project, which as we all know has not been restored for 30 years. Governing body gave authorization a few months ago to give this project, and then contractors got here and began the work. They realized that the interior was more pitted than they thought, and they need to use a different kind of epoxy paint to properly do this, and a change order, which is in the bond of 15.5, needs to be authorized, so this tank can continue. Our water system is currently shut down, and we're captive to buffers water. So I don't, I don't think we need, we can delay this, Ted, help me here if I'm correct in what I'm stating.
Correct.
Okay, so you really need, we need to authorize that. J is authorization of disability need for an employee. And K, we can move, but if the governing body approved the recycling center, and just to put these ducks in a row, the administrator reached out, the DEP concerned that someone made question if we needed permits. We did receive acknowledgement that we do not need permits for the recycling center. But Councilwoman, if you need to, we can move that, we will have further discussion on that on our next meeting. Okay? Is everyone in agreement with that?
We want to look.
I'm just waiting for that.
All right, so--
I will keep that on, it's a revenue source. Why are we tabling?
I'm fine. I'm fine. So now we need to amend, Councilwoman--
It's a month.
Councilwoman Petush has a motion, and I believe it's easier to amend your motion to, for pending business, leave on B, C, D, and N, and for new business, leave on D--
No.
I'm sorry. C, D, E. A, C, D, E--
F, G, H, I, and J.
And K, recycling center. Okay, Councilwoman, would you amend your motion to what Glenn just said?
Yes.
Do I have a second? Second. And is there any discussion on that? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we had, I need, did we get a motion open from the borough? Any motion open early public?
Some move.
Second. So any fellow of the public wish to speak to an agenda item, please come up, state your name and address for the record. Now, an item that has been removed, but does constitute an agenda item, so you're allowed to speak.
Can I assume that--
Hello? Yes.
Can I assume that tonight you're going to vote on Bailey Ave.?
If there's any discussion, I'm not sure how it's going to go. The council table, let's see.
Well, I guess, if I don't speak now, then I guess it might be too, it might be too late. So I was going to listen first to discussion, but if you're going to vote on it, then perhaps I should give my opinion.
You should now, right.
Okay, I think it's, from what I've heard, I think it's an outrage to expect Bloomingdale citizens to pay for what is essentially a private party. Especially in terms of, you know, in terms of, people are always complaining about taxes, people are complaining we don't have enough money, and I think this is outrageous expenditure. It's a private party. I've heard people argue that it's open to the public. I don't, how many years has this party been held?
Seven to eight years.
That's, you know, that's what people are telling me. I never heard of it until this year, until it was an agenda on the council. I never, ever heard of it. I've spoken to a number of people, nobody has heard of it. Apparently, it's just people in the neighborhood, and by word of mouth, friends, word of mouth for friends.
Yeah, I respect your comments, but they're inaccurate. It is a public event, it's been advertised on the public events calendar every year for the past eight years, advertised on the borough website, advertised through the rec center, advertised in the schools, so it's far from what you're referring to.
As I said, I, a lot of things are advertised, a lot of things, you know, may be advertised. I think I pretty much keep up with things that are going on. As I said, I never heard of it, and I think that if it's a public event, then it should be on public property. If it's on private property, then I don't see that that's a public event.
And I take your comments, just for the record, our Christmas strolls on private property in the Methodist church, our municipal lines Halloween dances on private property at the Fireman's Hall, so it's not the only event that is done on private property.
It seems like a church and a Fireman's Hall would be, something would be more public.
But it's not public property.
Well--
Those are your comments.
Well, perhaps I used the wrong word, but what I meant is something that was open to the public, a church for Fireman's Hall as opposed to, you know, people's homes.
Anyone else have anything? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to any item, any agenda, please come up, state your name and address for the record.
Nancy, have a first 67 really good news. I'd like to comment on Bailey Ave., I have two sons who are older, 27 and 20. When Bailey Ave. first started, it was just a word-bout thing, and then all of a sudden after a year or two, I don't know if I'm speaking, a year or two, it became a public thing. I've got to tell you, my son first told me that, "Let's go to Bailey Ave." I was like, "What?" Went to Bailey Ave., was close to Walter T.'s cars, which was wonderful. People were strolling up and down. I saw people, I met new people. Parents were having a good time, kids were having a wonderful time, crying yes, laughing yes, older, younger. It was a wonderful, wonderful experience, just like the fireworks are, the Halloween dance at the municipal lines. This is what a community needs, different things to bring people together and meet different people and see each other. Outside, bringing them together, it's, God knows, we've got to go to kids outside more. It's a wonderful time, and the kids feel like they're big shots, because they go up and down the street without worrying about cars, and everybody knows where they are, and they're having fun. So I'd just like to say that it is a wonderful community experience, that maybe starting out private, but turned into a wonderful public thing.
How many years has it been public?
Since its inception.
Oh, eight years?
Since its inception.
My mistake.
Oh, I thought you said it started out--
No, it started as a smaller event.
My bad.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make a comment?
Hi, John Dorsey, 80 South Room. Just a couple of things. I guess, one was just the discouragement of coming here today and seeing that a lot of the items that were on the agenda for the work session last week are now being tabled for tonight. So again, I see that you all went through it, and to some degree, it was agreed upon that a lot of these items were tabled. But I have heard, and I've even read, that, as you mentioned, Mayor, that Councilwoman Shorben doesn't feel that the meetings are run properly, and that there are often times that work session items are discussed during regular sessions and vice versa. So now that's actually what's going to happen, is the next meeting, there's going to be many work session items that are going to be discussed at a regular meeting. So that's, I guess, kind of frustrating, that we read it, we hear it, but then many of the items are being pushed off till--
It's just on the agenda?
It was about the agenda, absolutely. But I'll get to that, no problem. Am I right? It is about the agenda. All the items on the agenda.
No, no, it's not on the agenda.
It was discussing all the items on the agenda.
Talking about the actions--
Just the actions--
From the agenda.
It's not on the agenda.
Really?
Yeah, really.
Got a staple?
Save it to the end, you can say anything you want.
I don't have to save it to the end. But I'll be here for the end of it.
Thank you.
Secondly, I know it's a very hot-button topic, but we have yet to hear exactly why two council members have voted no for the pilot program. So I'll offer this out there. Mr. Cochrane--
I'm going to speak.
Still on the agenda.
Still on the agenda.
And I can still talk about it. So, Mr. Cochrane and Ms. Petush, I would ask you again, I would ask you again, if you could kindly let the public know, because many of us do want to know, Mr. Cochrane, I stood here two weeks ago, three weeks ago, and asked you if you didn't want to vote for the pilot program, what was the next step, or what did you have in place? And you sat there and said, "I have nothing," but I know this is not right, and that was all we got. So, you know, Councilwoman Shorben had given us some reasons, and I'd like to hear the reasons from the two of you. If you could just kind of let us know, you know, the public that's here, and it'll get into the paper, and it'll get into the patch. Why? Why did you vote no? Because again, there's so much that's positive for this town, so we'd like to know that. And then real quickly, the last thing I would say is that, you know, I completely agree, Bailey Ave. is a great thing for this town. I've said it before, I stood here and said that it's a wonderful opportunity for the town to get together and, as we said earlier, meet new people. It's certainly not a private event. It is held on some public, on some private property, but it's open to everyone, so it should, you know, the idea that it's not open to everyone, it absolutely is. That's all, and I'd love to hear your comments.
I agree with you. My comments haven't changed from last time I voted.
This whole system doesn't get the money, I don't believe that Martin Brogan's right.
Councilwoman, do you have anything?
The side item has been tabled, am I correct?
It did on the agenda, yeah.
Okay.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Frank Riley, 21 Trail Street. First thing I'd like to talk about is Bailey Ave. Bailey Ave. is a public event. We have people that come from other towns. Just like I heard of the fireworks in Kinnellon, and so the fireworks in Bloomingdale, people from other towns circulate around. And so is a public event, that people actually come here to walk on the street. My second item I'd like to address is the tabling that we're on tonight. What happens in the event, the next meeting, or the meeting after that, that the motions are made to table items, and could this be rolled ons on these items and never addressed? Is that what's going to happen to some of these items?
I guess--
And I know it's kind of an open-ended question, but is it possible that members of the council can continually table items so they can never be addressed?
The arbitral's, which were changed, I think this item was changed this year, I don't think this item existed last year, where the first thing on the agenda is, you really table something, that never existed before, to table something, remove something from the agenda, excuse me, remove-- So next to your question is, the probability of the votes are there to remove an item, in this case, these were tabled to our next meeting, and at our next meeting, if the governing body, if the votes are there to do the same, similar topic--
So what you're telling me is conceivable, that an item can be continuously tabled, so it can never be addressed?
I would, I would say this is conceivable.
It is classed to be approved by the council. Can't you speak on the council, but--
Right, I think that's the death. I think that needs to be addressed. So here, my third item is, I agree with Mr. Dorsey. When Mr. Cochrane was asked, like, I believe at one of the meetings, he said, "You go to no against the pilot program," and he said, "I have no objection." And I think that the public deserves more of an elaboration. Tonight was the first time that you mentioned that you were against it because the school wasn't funded.
You mentioned that.
Well, okay, you might have, but I didn't.
Okay.
And Mrs. Petush, at some point in time, are you going to give us a reason why you're voting no?
I will.
But not at this meeting?
Not right now.
Okay. Back in, Thomas Kane was an American patriot during the American Revolution, and he was known for writing articles, all those articles. He wrote the pamphlet Common Sense. And there's a quote that's attributed to him, but it's never been proven that he actually said it. And the quote was, "Leave, follow, or get out of the way." Now, we have members in this council that they won't leave, they won't follow, and they won't get out of the way. And I think that's absolutely pathetic. I think that we need information, if you're not going to, if you're not going to vote for something, I think we need to know the reason why. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the agenda item? So no one, do I have a motion to close?
Some moves.
All in favor?
Aye.
The first item of business under pending businesses, discussion in regards to our best practices, which the resolution is due out this evening. The best practice is a program that Governor Christie put together a few years back. It's simply considered a report card of the operation of the municipality, and we need to receive, I believe, a 90 percentile of grade, which we need to receive your state date. This item was tabled at our September 18th meeting, but I was able to get a vote to allow our administrator to seek a CFO to complete this form, because our former CFO, well, our, not our former, formerly known as, we've had two CFOs this year. One retired in January, and then an appointment was made in August, and that gentleman resigned shortly before the deadline on this best practice. So fortunately, Ted, our administrator, reached out to the Department of Consumer Affairs, and received a waiver of the requirement of having a CFO be formally performed. Ted explained our circumstances with our CFO's resignation, that the Consumer Affairs has allowed Ted to file this best practice report. And of course, with the help of mine, that's Jared Gallagher, our treasurer. And the report, you will have all been copied on since September 28th, and, you know, pretty much follows suit from prior years, so we will achieve the 90 percentile to continue our profit of $600,000 to $460,000 state date. But the deadline has passed. September 28th was the deadline, this has been tabled since the 18th. So we have, again, sought the extension from the state to allow us this evening to adopt this resolution to get to that immediately, so they can adopt, accept our best practices. So we can get to a discussion point after a motion is made. I first need a motion to adopt the resolution accepting our 2012 best practice report. Will someone make that motion?
Someone will.
So that would be resolution number 2012 10.1. I'm sorry, was Yasmin shift?
Yes.
Now, is there discussion on that motion?
Yes.
All been copied since 9/28. So yes, Councilwoman?
I have discussion. First of all, my memory serves me that we had directed our business administrator to file this, the deadline being Friday, and I believe that that's what was, that's what I believed was happening. My other, my other quest, that's what we did, right?
Right, but it still needed a resolution from the governing body.
Okay. My other question is, if we had a CFO until August, why didn't she file this? Why did we wait that long to file it?
We had CFO through July. We received the best practice at the end of, end of July, and our, our most recent resigned CFO had taken on that responsibility, which I can document, be emailed if you like--
So your answer is, we didn't get this till the end of July?
Correct.
Okay, that's a good answer. My other question is regarding the areas that we had to answer no on. that we had to answer no on. I think we ought to take a closer look so we can answer yes on these things. And the one being number 20. And I think it's excellent that the governing body, that we should try to answer yes on that one. But also, the one that requires elected officials to attend a workshop. Just as the planning board must attend a workshop to be a planning board member, I think we should require elected officials to also attend workshops. And that wouldn't be that difficult to get a yes on that one. The other one that's very frustrating to me is the transparency, the one that we answered pending. Now, I think it's probably two months ago that we had passed a resolution by the council to post that on our website. It's, it doesn't seem that difficult to put up an office and a salary, similar to what we quoted that is on the Pompton Lakes website. So if we accomplish those things, I think we could do a lot better on this report than we did this year.
Again, I agree with your comments, and that's why it exists. So we'll both, we'll see what our nos are. And our goal is next year to have less nos.
And I think we need to keep that on the agenda so it doesn't get lost, that we address how we move forward to create.
I personally think we should go to committee, which is the government, well, I don't know what we call it now. I call it government operations committee, to define two as best practice. The goal, though, which we have achieved is to secure our state aid. And tonight, we just adopted the resolution. That's our plan. And if the governing body can tweak the plan, make sure we can answer any questions you raise. Any further discussion?
You're welcome.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Toots.
Yes.
Sherman. Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Item C, did you leave that one on?
Yes, we did.
This is a report on financials for the animal shelter. Councilwoman Sherman had a question. It's on the agenda. And Ted, you had prepared.
I have the requested information. Lisa Perry could not make tonight's meeting. The question that needed to be is, what is the status of the budget for shelter? And the, you know, that Lisa Perry just forwarded to the council today, a large amount of reports involving conservative issues that she had. The animal shelter budget currently, this was the number 10 days ago, is, we still have a balance of $18,597.
Balance, out of the $30,000.
So we still, we still have that money. And there, and it was nothing to come against that figure at that point. So we're doing well at that point. Currently, when I got that report 10 days ago, there were nine dogs in residence and six cats. And our revenue source from donations, adoptions, and redemption of animals has brought in, 10 days ago, near today, $14,670.
What about the salary on them? What do we, what do we spend in salaries for the animal shelter?
That would be $12,000 out of the $30,000.
Out of the $12,000, I don't have the exact, but out of, out of the $30,000 that are set aside, we're still retaining $18,597. But we're still within budget.
That's including all the salaries for the people we pay?
So far. But only part of it, which is part of the.
And just, just for the public's sake, should we recall, when we separated ways from the Blue Devil Animal Shelter nonprofit group, our goal was to not exceed the amount that was originally posed to that organization that was supposed to operate, which was $30,000. That was, that was what the governing body thought about proposing to that nonprofit. So when, when our ECO was confident we could, you know, in-house run this program, we wanted not to exceed $30,000 as an operating expense, because that's what that did. So the good news is, we've only spent $12, but we've brought in $14,000 in revenue. So, you know, at the end of the year, I mean, this could be a break-even point for the borough that has cost nothing to operate our animal shelter and host it.
I don't want to mislead the council that we're going to be able to hold this figure forever. But so far, we, although this is our first eight months out of running the animal shelter, we haven't had any experience before. And that Lisa has animal control background that obviously never got involved in the day-to-day animal shelter also. But so far, we're fucking right. Just thank you, volunteer volunteers, who have been very helpful. And if we continue to make that work, we should hopefully be successful.
And again.
Information is in our book.
Well, the most current reports from Lisa.
Well, Lisa's reports were.
And the amount of the money that we spent so far on salaries.
I just gave it to you, $18,597.
Can you hand my box, please, first? Thank you.
And don't forget, members, the, our animal control officer gives monthly reports, which you all have received, showing you take of revenue, how many animals we serve.
I don't think that includes any financial information, just to, what the work that they've done. And she does a good job of it, too. Well, I have a printout, October 9, of the animal shelter line. And it does show that there's $18,500 left. But I don't see anything on this sheet that accounts for salaries.
I don't have the, all I ask is, what is the balance of the $30,000 that we set aside? And the number I was receipt was $18,597.
Well, that's what I have in the audit trail. But the audit trail doesn't include salaries. I'll come in and sit down with you and go over that.
We'll probably share it with the treasurer. Anything else? So that again, I was just for discussion. Item D, discussion in regards to Nightmare on Bailey Ave. Councilman, this was, this was originally on the agenda for September 28. That meeting was canceled. And then it was on the agenda for September 25. That meeting, the item was tabled. And it was put on the meeting for October 9. And that meeting was stopped. And here we are this evening. Now, Councilwoman, you had tabled this initially. And I know you, you know, you had stated on the public record that regardless of, if we had had discussions earlier, I would have voted no. And I would try to convince you otherwise because of the value of this community program for our town. Then I saw an email that you sent that insurance was a concern, which I never knew was a concern of yours. And I have replied to it.
No, you didn't.
Right. But this discussion's for about four weeks.
But I had, so I had that email going. And it wasn't just about insurance. It was my, my main thing is usually, what do these things that we pay for cost us? And it isn't always clear to everybody when we keep giving them one price on one thing and we don't include all the costs. I did, on October 9, get the email from Ted that tells us that our, they hire special police, 160.
And we bring in our special police.
Or 14 for two VW workers. They each work, they work four hours. He said he averaged this, depending on who's working. He said there was no cost for insurance. And that the recreation committee approved supplies of $1,500.
For a total of $2,076.
Right. But then I went back again, and I think I asked about, I wanted to know if someone was injured on private property, do we have a statement that tells us that who would be responsible? The homeowner or the burrow? And I just recently got that explanation, that it would be the burrow. And then the homeowner would also be involved. And you are assuring us that if someone gets injured, it would be if someone slipped in the Methodist church or in the fireball at an event, they would, our insurance company would cover it. And I kind of agree that those buildings don't equate to somebody's front yard. So I just want that assurance from you that that would, that our insurance knows that this is on private property in a neighborhood, and it would be covered. That's all I want to know.
And I believe you received your answers. The issue of likelihood of exposure of whether it's private property or church is again, there's no difference in the exposure of your question. Matter of fact, which I believe the property owner, which is Councilman Yasni, should actually request from the burrow a certificate of insurance, as does the church and does the schools, when we use their facility. We need to provide to those entities that we have insurance, naming them as additionally insured on our policy. And Mr. Yasni should ask for the same thing, to protect himself, because the exposure exists.
But it isn't just his property, is it? I thought it was quite a cute property.
Well, the primary haunted house where most people go is, Mr. Yasni, there is another neighbor who runs for rec. They do a haunted egg hunt for the little kids. So that, that resident, Mr. Mastal, should also request the same, which technically request at the same time. Other than that, it's pretty much the streets, the sidewalks, the people.
And there's no, is there food being sold or whatever? We don't need the Board of Health involved.
No.
Okay. Well, it isn't always easy to get answers, but I thank you for them.
So what is the direction of the government?
Yes, to go down this.
Okay. I'd like a motion to approve Bailey Ave based on the.
I still have another question on the other one.
Sure.
I wasn't happy last year about the tombstones that were out there with names on it wishing other people farm. I'd like to make sure that this doesn't happen again.
In other words, this shouldn't turn into a political.
That's correct.
It's understandable.
But it was approved last year. Is there, I need a motion to approve Bailey Ave as discussed, based on the numbers submitted by our administrator. Do I have that motion?
Some move.
Do I have a second? Second. I need a roll call.
Well, did I get an answer for that? There won't be any political tombstones out there?
I can guarantee it.
You can?
Yes. If I see him, if it does have it, I will take him down.
Yes, for Mr. Tomah.
Yes.
Toots. Yes. Sherman.
Yes.
Sherman. Yes. Yasni.
I'm refused. That's all comments left. All right. My comments have nothing to do with Bailey Ave or anything you approved. Thank you, Mr. Short. And let's leave it at that. What I put on the sign in my property is my business. End of story.
Even though we're paying you?
No, 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 no. I'm talking about last year. Why are we turning this into our last year's topic of conversation? It has nothing to do with last year. You guys are voting for something for the kids this year. I don't understand your comments. And what I put on my property is my business. End of story.
So if it's a public event that's funded by the town.
Don't make this into together.
Yeah, I understand.
As long as you apologize for calling it a private party, for calling it all the names you have, maybe now we can start to talk about who's done what right and wrong.
And I'm not apologizing for anything.
Well, that's what I thought.
Are we moving along?
Hope so.
So Bailey Ave will be back on. So spread the news. Thank you, Ray. Okay. We're dropping all the way onto item N. Okay. This is an authorization to pay the former, former, formerly known as CFO Donna Molino, who served our, as our CFO for six plus years. Right, Ted? And then moved on at the end of, well, actually, yeah, you were this year. And the governing body back in March authorized Donna to remain on after she retired, or if you know where, for 90 days at $50 an hour through the end of May. And then May came around, and we still didn't have CFO. So we authorized to continue Donna until we hired the last CFO sometime in August. So Ted, I know there was notice on specifics that the council was asking for. You have that, it was in an email form you had sent this, which I don't see in the book. It's not in there. There's no numbers on it. On October 5, the rest of the governing body, Donna had provided invoices for a time during June and July. The total cost that we all worked for those two months for the workshops done, which is described in the memo, was $5,000. And again, something the governing body authorized. And simply a motion to approve any of these. You can wait since July.
Okay. So what I think Frank's memo was, could we have seen a bill with the details and dates and amounts? I can't understand why something like that isn't in our book.
Again, you approved our $50 an hour for those months. So Ted, there was an invoice attached to the email. I don't, I can't explain why it's not in the book.
So just a resolution.
This is all the information we got working.
I mean, Donna is billing us $5,000. It should be 100 hours.
That's fine. Don't you think we should get a bill like we do from other people? I worked, I worked May 16 for three hours.
On our professional services, we don't get itemized bills like that. We have a $4,500 bill from our auditor that we have tabled tonight that is not itemized, Councilwoman. It's a flat $4,500 for budget work. So I'll ask you the same question when we deal with that next meeting. None of our professional services give us itemized bills.
Our attorney asked for it. He did.
It's a flat fee based on.
Did he ever get that? The heat, that did he at least see attorney pay?
I didn't go over to witness this, Ted. I absolutely have confidence in the billing amount from our former CFO for the two months she worked. Simple amount of work, but the money will be over. Again, up to the governing body, I can see action taking on this. You can explore the bills with our attorney. The amount's not going to change. She's been owed since August 1st.
Okay. So we have, we don't have a, we don't have any information? I agree with Mrs. Sherman. We need the information. How many, what days she worked? It would be nice. How about information?
Based on the hourly rate.
90 days, she's $4,500. And another.
Bill's $5,000.
Another $5,000 were after that.
Which is easily cumulated based on the work that was put in. I know everyone was copying on the seat there. Why is that in the book? That I can't answer.
John, as I said before, my email's down. So I don't have a copy in my box as I request. I've passed this for a long time. I could not open any of the news mail. So I've been asking for copies to be put in my bin. I'm not getting them. And again, I think I agree with Mrs. Sherman on this. I think we should have the hours and what day she is.
Again, invoice was attached. You could explore that, research that. It's not going to change the amount we owe as professionals for the time she served the burrow. As I stated, our engineer, our auditor, our temporary attorney has to bill bill of hours. We don't get itemized hourly bills. So a lot of those questions carry with bodies.
I make a motion to pay the bill.
I appreciate that motion. Thank you. And I'm going to second it. I prefer the discussion. I have a, I would hope we can pay this professional who served the burrow. An authorized bill. An authorized bill. We authorize her to do these services. Our bills we're going to discuss in another meeting that were not authorized, and that's a separate discussion for another professional.
Well, my pressures would be to wait till next Tuesday, put it on that agenda, and pay her then when we see the details. I will abstain on this.
And I expect your opinion, but Councilwoman, it's not going to change the amount we owe that our professional for what you voted on.
I asked...
May's authorized to be done.
I asked about a bill that we paid eleven hundred dollars to the contractor that simply said, remove a tree from the water and debris. Eleven hundred dollars. Then I was told I shouldn't ask here, I should go look at the bill. I looked at the bill. Do you know what the bill said? Remove a tree from water and debris. Don't people give us a bill that say three men at two hours at so much an hour? No. I think we deserve bills like that. Yes, I do. And I don't think the end it doesn't say where or how much. I don't think I'd ask the contractor anymore than the attorney asked for. Just the details of a bill.
So she's not going to say because of that? Mail to everyone on October 5th. An invoice was attached. Again, I prefer you don't table this because this professional hasn't been waiting since August 1st. We have numerous cancellations since then. He's entitled to be paid. He's to review, Councilwoman, anything he wants. It's not going to change the number, that is over. Any further discussion?
This is... she worked the ninety days, which is the forty-five-hundred dollars, and then another ten hours, I presume, for the...
So you hired one.
At fifty dollars a third.
All right, any further discussion? Any roll call, please?
Councilmember Tuch.
I agree with... I'm abstaining. I'd like to see more information, what hours she...
Yes.
Shortman. Abstain. Yost.
Yes.
Compton.
Abstain.
Modo.
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Okay, moving on. I believe under eight, we're starting with item D? Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, item A. Circle the process. Item A. Do you need any motion to accept the St. County Open Space Grant application we submitted this year for? We submitted a hundred thousand dollars for the Walter Teaburg restroom facility. We were awarded seventy-eight thousand. I need authorization to accept the seventy-eight thousand, although I am still lobbying with freeholders to get us back to the hundred thousand. I'll come back to authorize that additional one, too, when I'm successful in getting it. For now, I need a motion just to accept, since it's on the record, seventy-eight thousand from the county trust fund.
Does it have a timeframe? Does this has to be used, this money?
Has to be used?
Yeah, will you have to use the grant?
They usually don't put a timeframe, but they do want you to spend down, because what happens is our next funding round, like next year, where we do our application, which has the council to go for money for the leisure field teachers.
Next year, for example?
They want to see that you spend down money before they give you more, which leads us to topic 8D, which we're going to discuss in a moment. That money's been on the table for about six years, so they haven't pulled it. But the goal is to spend it down so you can keep accumulating more as you go on. It'll start affecting your grant applications if you still have money in the bank account.
Well, I guess my question is, does the town have to add any money to this grant? Is it like magic buns or anything like that?
No, it's not. It's not. It's what? The hundred thousand, we're hoping to do without a match, based on... Not a match, without any funds from the Rose Fund. Based on this award, there's a potential of twenty-eight thousand. Now, we find we can't budget it, you return the money next year. But I'm lobbying with the freeholder director to put that to the hundred we requested. So we'll see how we... But for their budgetary reasons, so they can close their awards and not reconsider other applications they didn't approve, we need to accept. So there's a motion. Have you heard the discussion? Roll call, please. Have you done the discussion yet?
Want to make sure that when we did approve getting this grant or looking at this grant, there's a lot of people here that are looking to put it in location for that.
That'll come when we design and engineer.
Make sure that... We didn't put that on there, then just look at it and go.
I mean, we had some great input from the residents, we had a public hearing on this application. We originally thought about behind the canvas, of course, by the cul-de-sac, and then some people brought the idea closer to the... The thing they supposed to be a little closer to the glenwall half side of the park a lot, which is maybe more conducive place to do it. That's what we're getting. I think it's whatever it costs effective from a order booked up perspective. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Shif.
Yes.
Shortman. Yes. Yost.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Modo.
Yes.
Tuch.
Okay. Item C, adoption of resolution 2012-10.2. Submission of our municipal lines grant. We have submitted a letter requesting an extension, promising them that today we will have a resolution. So I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? Other than thanking Cindy Hopper, who I think this is her first year running our municipal lines grant. Has done an excellent job, so I look forward to continuing in that role.
Councilmember Shortman. Yes. Yost.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Modo. Tuch. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, item D. That is 10.2. Item D, discussion regards to drainage at Walter Teaburg and county grant balances. We have forty thousand dollars we need in the county grant that has probably been on the table for four or five, possibly six years. I don't know the exact date. Forty thousand dollar balance. That is the money that has been used to refurbish the tennis court, build the two new baseball fields, purchase the bleachers, do some initial drainage work under the hidden drainage lines we found that were there for forty years and never retained. So we have forty thousand left. Ted, when we attended the open space county planning board meeting to present the restroom application, they had told us we need to spend down what we have left, which is Oakwood, which we just did. Oakwood, like you have been there, sidewalks look very nicely. There's still some lines you need to go there with park benches and the dock, et cetera. That was a hundred thousand we had spent down by the end of this year. And forty thousand on this grant. So what I want tonight is authorization simply for Ted to see twice on... These are the three things that I would like to do with the balance on this money. One is move the playground. We've already authorized that. Move the playground from Sloan Park to the school. That's been approved by the Board of Ed. We're just waiting on the contract that you do that. Need the cost of that for seven thousand dollars to take apart, rebuild, and reinstall footings, et cetera, the playground equipment. Leading us thirty-three thousand dollars on this grant, which is public information, so it's not a secret. And the two things I'd like to look at on that is there's something called drill and fill. It's a technique to alleviate drainage problems on the field surface playing areas. Rather than getting into hundreds of thousands of dollars in pipes and drainage and things, I'd like to have Ted look into bidding their pricing that. And then the second is the perimeter drainage that we cleaned two years ago still needs work. The basins don't... aren't flush to the water level. Riprap stone has to be defined just to make that drainage area work. So it's those three things. Playground, drill and fill for drainage on the playing surfaces, particularly for soccer, because it's a mighty situation there. And thirdly is the perimeter drainage, which will help catch the water that comes off red sweep trails hill, and alleviate a lot of this play surface problem as well. We're not authorizing doing the work, we're authorizing Ted getting the three proposals. Excuse me, two proposals. To then hopefully have twenty-third award those proposals, because hopefully they'll be under the threshold. Because we need to spend this money down by October.
We can get the playground moved back.
Playground was authorized in August, it's just the contractor's been crazy busy.
I'll make that motion.
I have a question.
Let's get a second hold of the discussion, if you don't mind. So this motion on the tables are second.
Second.
We're just authorizing Ted to get pricing. And now, yes?
I know we have problems with the leisure field and those bleachers. Can we apply this money towards that because of the existing problems that we have there?
No, this is specific to Walter Teaburg. We've been quiet about that these days, because we've already spent... I forget what the original grant amount was. We've already spent a hundred forty thousand over the last five years on Walter Teaburg. This money's specific to Walter Teaburg. Again, my recommendation is next year we apply for the leisure.
Okay, what happens if we have problems, or if you have to spend more money for the bathrooms and the restrooms there? Can we use that money for that?
Well, we won't. That work will be done till next spring. We'll lose the forty thousand dollars.
Can you do some of the work now so you don't lose it?
For the restrooms, no. That's an engineer-designed bid, that's a public bid.
Because you already... you asked for a hundred thousand, am I correct?
Correct.
You only received seventy-eight.
Correct.
So if you use some of that money now and start using it, then this way we'll be in our means, just in case the freeholders don't approve of the hundred thousand. At least we could apply for the restroom.
And again, I understand your question. Here's the problem. The bathrooms will be a publicly bid job, because it's over seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. So we can't do a piece now. We can't do a water line. We can't do a foundation, because it has to be... You can't split a project up like that legally. So that has to be bid.
Are you going to be shortballing with that bathroom with the seventy-eight?
My goal, as I stated earlier on the record, my goal is, right now, speaking with and at fairhold feedback, to get the extra twenty-two thousand to make it to the hundred thousand. If we're unsuccessful, as I stated earlier, and we can't come in at seventy-eight, if we can't fund it through the Rose Fund, we may then return that seventy-eight thousand, or ask to that to be transferred to the leisure field. This is an existing grant award. It's five years old, that has a forty thousand dollar balance on it, specific to the fields at Walter Teaburg. It has to be used for that purpose. So all your ideas are great, it's just not possible. Any other discussion?
Yes. One thing. Is there, speaking of Walter Teaburg, has there been any problems with the lights?
Well, that was removed from the agenda, so you'll have to find out on the 23rd. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Shif.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Modo.
Yes.
Tuch. Yes. Shif.
Now.
Shortman. Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay. Item E, I believe, right? A little confused with the scratches here. We need to introduce by title ordinance number 172011, bond ordinance providing for the replacement of a water main on Lakeside Avenue, an appropriate two hundred thousand dollars. We have two breaks in twenty-four hours on Lakeside Ave. There are literally band-aids on these breaks as we speak. I don't know if you guys have seen it after capitimes, some of the sidewalks in the area, some road considered weak. And the recommendation, rather than continuing with band-aids from engineers, place this line entirely from Woodward down Lakeside to the First Cross Street. Oh.
Oakwood.
Correct. And freezing a whole looping system and whatnot, it's just a mess. So we need all that just to get this done, rather than any band-aids on a problem. So if you have discussion, but first let me have a motion. Do you introduce by title?
So moved.
All in favor?
Bond ordinance providing for the replacement of a water main on Lakeside Ave, located by the Earl, will be built. This county is safe to choose the appropriate two hundred thousand dollars. The airport authorized the addition of this, so I would ask the Earl to finance it and cross the...
Right, second final reading will be November 27th, because we don't have time to advertise from now on, 23rd. Again, this is supposed to be moved from our last meeting. It is an emergency situation, so the works are going to have to begin on this situation. We will do a final reading on the 27th, because it is an emergency. Are there any comments or questions, Donna, while we're here?
How do we come up with the two hundred thousand dollars?
From our engineer, based on linear footage, the number of connections, et cetera. And lack of reputation.
Do they have a bond in place for this?
This is authorized.
They don't have any existing bond, but I can tell this.
Any other questions? And there's no action taken, we just introduce. And let's see if there's any other questions. Again, final second final reading will be 7:30 on November 27th. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Compton.
Yes.
Modo.
Yes.
Tuch. Yes.
Yes.
Shortman. Yes. Yes.
Okay, I need a motion to authorize the Bloomingdale, Department of Labor's auxiliary waiter of their annual flea market bake sale fee. A motion.
Second.
All in favor? All right, thank you. November 4th, Martha Towns. Thank you.
Is it a bake sale? Is it a bake sale?
I thought it was a bake sale, too, though.
Says a waiter for a flea market.
Yeah, bake sale.
But I just knew bake sale.
Vendor sale and bake sale. I believe that is Sunday, the 4th, Sunday, November 4th.
Okay, item G, authorization to hire Jamie Wenzel's Part-Time Animal Shelter, not to exceed thirty hours, twelve dollars an hour, replacing an individual who just got a full-time opportunity elsewhere. Do I have that motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Is that the same rate that we paid pre-existing?
We paid the same rate, more pre-existing except this person, because this person is a professional animal trainer. Old elephant paid the ten dollars. Slowed out, right?
Resolution's 10.3. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Modo.
Yes.
Tuch. Yes. Shif.
Yes.
Shortman. Yes. Yost.
Yes.
Thank you. I need authorization to hire Jennifer Perella, Part-Time Animal Shelter Assistant, not to exceed twenty-five hours at ten dollars an hour. Resolution 10.4. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Tuch. Yes. Shif.
Yes.
Shortman. Yes. Yost.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Thank you. Item I, authorization to change ordinary amount fifteen thousand five hundred to Alpine painting for Starlight Water Tank, for upgrade of the paint to coat the tank. As I explained earlier, there was more pitting than anticipated, and this epoxy different paint is a change order, which is covered in the financing that has been existing for ten years on this project. We don't want to stall this project any longer than it already is.
John?
Item 10.5. Excuse me, Councilwoman, is there a motion? We have discussion.
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
Yeah, I thought that we sent a diver down there originally to check out the...
Yeah, we had that three or four years ago. When Mr. Stevens was mayor, we put diver to hang and coat this out. But it wasn't until they went in there and started to actually do the same last evening removal, that they realized that this was far more pimp than they believed or defined in the beginning. The engineer that we hired from Anderson and Denzler recommended this. Carl, I'm sorry, Paul Domofowski also made this recommendation. And the fifteen thousand five hundred dollars is still covered, God, under the original bond for the rehab of the tank. So with this approval, we will now exceed the bond, and these folks will stay working and get this project done after thirty years. What's the warranty on this, Ted? Is it up, down, left, right, whatever we do? I don't have that...
We awarded that contract months ago, so it was all...
I don't know what the current standings are for. No, no, as long as we don't look at the new paint, we keep the warranty status that we have.
All right, so I'll amend the motion approving this subject to the warranty stating impact.
And how much is bond? How much do we have?
I don't have that figure on the top of my head. I know that we made the amount, and we... There is no requirement of extras needed if you approve this tonight for fifteen thousand five hundred. We're still under that.
Right, contract was awarded last year.
So the total will be two hundred and seventy-seven thousand four hundred and fifty include if we pass the fifteen-five, and the bond would be sufficient for that.
And it's by more than that because of engineering. Because you had also, you have water interconnects involved, and opening our water lines to get the bucket water. They have been touched in a hundred years. So there's more than just that proposal, but all within the funding mechanism and bonded.
Now we have to start paying.
Thirty years hasn't been enough. Okay, further discussion? That was resolution 10.5. Any roll call?
Councilmember Shif.
Yes.
Shortman. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Modo.
Yes.
Tuch. Yes.
Thank you. Then I need adoption resolution 2012-10.6, authorization for ninety-day medical disability for DPW worker Clint Romley. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Second. Again, wishing well in recovery and recovery. Yeah, roll call.
Councilmember Shortman. Yes. Yost.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Tuch. Yes. Shif.
Yes.
Item K, can you read that? Item K stays on the agenda.
Yes.
Acknowledgement from the pension DEP for approval of recycling yard. We approved, the governing body approved the installation of recycling center, behind the senior center. And as I stated, sort of got stalled because the administrator, she played safe, she stepped to the DEP to just confirm that there was no permits needed, because there was some public concern about that. And just to cross our Ts and dot all our Is, we received acknowledgement via email from the Department of Environmental Protection that there are no permits required for that project. So that's why I put the route, just to bring everybody up to speed. So now, you know, Ted doesn't need the direction, because we've already voted and authorized the petition. They'll be rocking and rolling on that. Any comment on that?
I just asked for a copy of the correspondence. With the DEP correspondence.
It was in the body of an even. Okay. I need a motion to hope we make public comment.
So moved.
Nineteen.
Second.
All in favor?